Good morning, everyone, and welcome to those in the audience. It's October 8th, 2021. The time is 9:07 a.m. Board members, please engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you are not, when you are done speaking. Please note that board members may be using their cell phones and laptop computers to access the agenda and information related to the meeting. Live web streaming is available through the State Board of Education website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. Agenda item one, call to order. Patricia Tim let me know that she would not be in attendance today. Also, as a reminder, I will be leaving early today due to a family event at noon, and Vice President Ko-Johns will be taking over at the helm. So, thank you in advance, Vice President. The October 8th, 2021 State Board of Meeting will now come to order. Agenda item 1.1, Andrea, please call the roll.
Patsy Ko-Johns?
Here.
Lisa Fricki?
Here.
Patty Goobles?
Here.
Jaclyn Morrison?
Here.
Patricia Tim?
Maureen Nichols?
Present.
Robin Stevens?
Here.
Deb Renee?
Here.
Commissioner Bloomstead?
Present.
Seven present, one absent.
Thank you, Andrea. Please rise, everyone, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item 1.3, information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted as you enter the room from the main entrance doors. The Open Meetings Act is also posted on the State Board of Education website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. Agenda item 1.4, COVID-19 Meeting Protocol. Commissioner?
Yeah, I'll just, we have published protocols within our agenda items, but just generally get, we're doing pretty well today, giving people the social distancing they might need and, and wearing masks, so thanks, just to be attentive to other people's needs. Thank you.
Agenda item two point, Agenda Item Two, Commissioner's Report. Agenda item 2.1, Agenda Overview and Consent Agenda Process. Commissioner?
Yeah, and I, I know that President Nichols, you're going to move around for our special guests a little bit for a timing on this, but I do want to remind board members, if you do have any items that, that you had chosen to, um, uh, call special attention to in the consent agenda, uh, Brian, do you happen to have any over there? I can see the, the bottom of the box, so no items. Okay, so we'll move forward with that. Also, so far, I guess we don't have any items to remove from the consent agenda, so I'll turn it back to you, Maureen, as I know you want to move on to.
Yes, I'm just going to move to Agenda Item Four right quick, the President's Report, which is short. I just want to thank those members of the Board that attended any of the area NASB, Nebraska Association of School Boards meetings in the past month or two. I found both of those that I attended very interesting and always good to see local Board members. And a special shout out to those members, Board members, who have attended via Zoom Wednesday, yesterday, and some today, uh, on the National Association of State School Boards Annual Delegate Conference. Very well attended, great sessions, and so I appreciate those of you that were able to make it work into your schedules to participate in those. Agenda item five, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made by Patty.
I do have one item to remove, so sorry about that.
You do?
Yeah, so there is one item to remove, item 5.2.8, um, on committee appointments, and so we'll take that up after, after this, but otherwise, the consent agenda should be, or that motion should be amended to remove that item.
Okay, so 5.2.8 will be removed, and where are you going to place it at, under what item?
Um, we'll move it down to the other business, I think. Well, we'll figure that out after this is done, so.
Okay, all right. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Patty and seconded by Lisa. Per Board policy, there is no discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda. Andrea, please call the roll.
Fricki?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Tim?
Goobles?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Morrison?
Upstein.
Nichols?
Yes.
Ko-Johns?
Yes.
Six yes, one no, one upstein.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andrea. We're going to move to Agenda Item Three, and we have one item for special presentations and discussions. Would Ryan For please come forward and introduce our next Agenda Item guest?
Good morning, Board members.
Good morning.
About two months ago, I got a phone call from a mother of a student here in Lincoln, Diane Mertens, who's with us today, and she expressed that her daughter, Whitney, and Whitney's friend Reese, were very interested in American Sign Language and the requirements around American Sign Language and the offerings within schools in the state, and that they would be interested in a presentation to the State Board on what they have been learning and researching over the past several weeks. And so, we worked together to find a time when it would make sense to present in front of the State Board, and so here we are at the October Board Meeting. And so, today with us is Whitney Mertens and Reese Pedersen, and their mothers, Diane Mertens and Nikki Pedersen, and so I'll turn it over to Whitney and Reese to introduce themselves and give their presentation, and then there will be time for comment, or for questions from Board members. So, Whitney and Reese, come on up.
Welcome, Whitney and Reese. It's always great to see students come and present to the Board. I bet you're just a little bit nervous, right?
Yeah.
Don't be. We're pretty easy to get along with, so welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
You'll want to speak right into the microphone if you can, so we can hear you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Whitney.
Can you speak up closer, hon?
Hi, my name is Whitney Mertens. I'm 11, and I attend St. Michael's.
Hi, my name is Reese Pedersen. I go to Moore Middle School, and I'm 12 years old. We have become very passionate about Sign Language because it's such a beautiful way of communication, and a lot of people depend on it. We would like to thank you for this amazing opportunity to be here and advocate for American Sign Language in schools. American Sign Language emerged as a language in 1817. Nationally, 90 to 95% of deaf children are born to hearing parents. Children are born ready to learn, but for a quarter of a million US children who are deaf, they enter school not prepared to succeed. Parents are often the source of a child's early learning of a language. The earlier a child is exposed to and begins to acquire language, the better that child's language, cognitive, and social development will become. We know that sign is easier to learn before speaking because fine motor coordination is easier to learn than vocal motor coordinations. Babies are a prime example of this, as parents teach simple sign language to their children to make it easier to understand their needs. In the early days of Nebraska, deaf students had their own school called the Nebraska School of Deaf. This school was for children with hearing disabilities and was founded in 1869. Unfortunately, after operating for a few decades, the school was closed due to the fact that a large number of the students had chosen to educate themselves among the mainstream. A school for the deaf has not been reopened in Nebraska, so families that rely on direct communication access have to relocate to a state that has a school for the deaf. Other families either homeschool or send their children to public or private schools that have to seek out American Sign Language on their own. They, they then figure out how their child is going to communicate with teachers and other students. Yes, an interpreter can be arranged for the child, but imagine if you were deaf and learning in an environment where you were one of the few or the only deaf child. This might be hard to imagine. You probably think that it means not hearing, but it means so much more. For a moment, put yourself in that child's shoes. Imagine you are in a world where everyone around you speaks French and you speak English. Now imagine yourself in a world where everyone can hear each other speaking and talk to one another, but you can't. It's the same thing. In both situations, you are close to others, but yet, in a sense, you are in another world, a world of your own. You feel distant from others. Navigating childhood is hard on its own when it comes to forming friendships and figuring out your interests, but adding a communication barrier to the situation only complicates the problem even more. If more students learned Sign Language, it would reduce isolation for hearing impaired students. Although they may have an interpreter, there is a barrier. In any classroom with a deaf student, it can be hard for the interpreter to keep up with everything the teacher and student says, not to mention, it is also very hard for the deaf student to participate in class and make new friends when the main source of communication is an interpreter. According to the Nebraska Office of Special Education, in this school year, there are 943 students under the identification of deaf or hard of hearing. In the LPS system, there are a total of 108 deaf and hearing impaired students, with 50 of those in elementary school. Deaf students who sign communicate in a different mode. It would be beneficial for these students to have more language partners. Our solution to this problem is to offer American Sign Language in schools. We realize this solution is somewhat of an uphill battle, especially since there is no endorsement for ASL in the state of Nebraska, which makes it hard to supply ASL teachers at schools. However, it was brought to our attention that accreditation, Rule 10, could allow teachers who are fluent in ASL to teach outside of their education area. ASL could be taught as an elective, or they could partner with an online program. Online programs such as StartASL.com provide a teacher's guide and curriculum. This online program currently has hundreds of schools all over the United States that use their curriculum. Our research indicated that Lincoln Southeast is the only school in LPS that offers an ASL club, and they only meet once a month. We also got information from Amy Roan, Director of Special Education in Nebraska, and she stated that Millard has some online programs as part of their career academy. We also looked on the Nebraska Department of Education website and found ASL listed as a course. This school year, there are two schools teaching ASL-1. Further investigation led us to legislation just passed last year in Nebraska accepting ASL as a foreign language. Legislative Bill 839 would allow the State Board of Education to provide for the teaching of American Sign Language in schools. If a school offers a course in ASL, the bill would require that it be offered to all students, regardless of whether the student is hearing, hard of hearing, or deaf. This brings us to our next question. Are we really committed, as a state, to improve our learning environment for the deaf and hearing impaired? Solutions to this question could be as simple as offering an after-school club for elementary students. Learning a language when you are young is easier. For middle and high school students, American Sign Language could be added as an additional foreign language class option. The University of Nebraska and other area colleges accept ASL as a foreign language credits, so students would be able to use these credits upon entering college. We realize having an American Sign Language teacher at every school would be a huge investment. We suggest starting with one school and gain interest or possibly utilize the online program, StartASL.com, and have an educational interpreter in the classroom to facilitate the online program. Schools across the state could poll the student body to gauge interest and demand. It could also be possible to utilize smart boards and technology to reach schools throughout Nebraska. The goal is to normalize Sign Language and give access to all students to create a better learning environment for all, as there are many additional benefits to learning American Sign Language. American Sign Language creates better social outcomes and environment for deaf and hearing impaired by reducing isolation. It improves language outcomes for deaf and hearing impaired children. A second language has been proven to be beneficial. A more inclusive learning environment for all. It promotes being bilingual and opens up career opportunities in the future. It leads to higher reading levels in kids and improves vocabulary and spelling skills. ASL signers have incredible spatial reasoning. Knowing ASL gives you a way to build relationships with countless deaf people and a way to enjoy the richness of the deaf community nationwide. And it can help teachers maintain a more respectful classroom by using signs for restroom and question, which can reduce interruptions, making it easier to teach and learn in a quieter To add to our argument, we've experienced the awkward stares happening in real life. While we were at the pool one day, we were practicing Sign Language, trying to see how long we could go without using words. Every time we looked up, we noticed someone whispering and staring at us like we were crazy. One girl in particular said, "Are you one of those sign people? Imagine this negative attention every single day, just for using a different method of communication. We were hurt by this, and we aren't even deaf. Imagine how hurt you'd be if you actually were deaf." We want Sign Language to be something people are proud of, not something you feel you have to hide. Normalizing Sign Language and giving all students access to this language would make it possible for the deaf students to feel more connected to their peers, and for the hearing to have a deeper respect for their fellow classmates, Sign Language, and all of the hearing impaired community. If ASL is taught in schools, imagine the ripple effect it could have in our state. Nebraska faces a teacher shortage, especially in the area with students with the highest needs, such as the deaf and hard of hearing. We could address that shortage by providing more opportunities for Nebraska students to take classes in ASL and later go on to teach it. There are so many ways that we can improve life for those in the hearing impaired community, but this change alone would help all children, hearing and hearing impaired, to live a better, happier life. So, please, help us to make an impact on children statewide. We have some handouts with some additional information, and again, thank you for your time and consideration.
I see the two of you in the state legislature one day, making, making state statute for us. Pretty amazing. Board members? Ms. Neary?
I just want to thank you. You both inspire me so much that it makes me very optimistic about our future, that two young people could think so deeply about people that have different needs than you. And what you're talking about is a huge equity issue, and I truly believe that when we're able to support all of our students and make sure that they're all thriving, that's when we are most successful. And I wanted to say kudos to your mom, because I am just amazed by these young people that they have that kind of awareness, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Patsy Ko-Johns?
Well, I actually have two questions for you, okay? So, I want to thank you as well. I, I think you're absolutely amazing. I taught speech, and I'd give you an A. So, oral communication should be no big deal for you when you get there, right? So, my, um, my first question is, what sparked your interest in this? What happened that sparked your interest, both of you?
Um, well, American Sign Language is just a really beautiful way of communication, and we realized that not a lot of people speak it, because, you know, it's not really used for those who aren't hearing impaired, so we thought that it would be cool if we could learn more about it, and it just seems so interesting, and the need for it is, yeah, And we just, when we were working on it, we just kind of noticed that there really wasn't, like, when we were, like, practicing it, we'd always get, like, stares, and we just don't want that to, like, be something that people have to deal with, because it's really, it's not their fault, and it shouldn't be something that they're ashamed of. And so, we just kind of want it to be more normal, and like, just everyone, we want as many people as we can to know it.
Okay, both, both good reasons. Now, where, where do you go from here? You've presented the problem to us. What, what are you going to do about it now? Next up.
Um, I guess we're just gonna do some further research and just try and, like, let more people know about it, so that we can really make this happen and get it into schools. And we want it to be, like, in middle school and high school, we want people to be able to, like, take Sign Language as a foreign language class, and we just kind of want it to be, like, something that a lot of people do and are interested in, because it really, and it, when we were learning it, it really is kind of, it's really fun to learn, and so it's not something, like, boring. It is fun, and so we just kind of want more people to, like, be interested in it, and so, yeah. Yeah, just making people aware that, um, there's more to Sign Language than just hand movements, because, um, it's just, it's a really important, it's some people's way of life and their way that they get to share their voice with the world, so, um, yeah.
Well, I hope you make lots and lots of speaking engagements and make everyone you can aware of this, just like you did for us today, because I really learned a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Wow. Your girls are amazing. Have you considered talking to your state senator and doing a short presentation?
Um, no, we have not.
Oh, that, that might be, I think that would be very impressive, and, um, my husband was a principal and decided to get out of that, and so he went into Special Education Transitions, and one of his favorite classes was Sign Language, and he came home one day, turned on, I don't know where, he had a copy of It's a Beautiful World, or something like that, and he signed it to me, and it was really an eye awakening moment for me, so I'm really proud of you girls, and don't stop here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jaclyn?
I have an 11-year-old daughter, and I am so impressed with your bravery, because I don't know if she would have been as brave to do this today.
Thank you.
So, I, I think that's awesome. Um, I also want to tell you that the work that you're doing is very important, and I'll tell you how it translates into my career and what I have done. I worked as a, as an attorney in the courts, and a lot of times, when I'd have clients who were either deaf or hard of hearing, we'd have to have an interpreter. And so, you have to have people who are hearing, who are able to speak Sign Language, who can do the interpretation for people. And so, I think the work that you are doing will open up careers for you, but also help you to be, help other places be accessible to people, such as courtrooms, hospitals, things like that. They're always looking for translators, and sometimes, if we didn't have a translator, that person's court hearing got continued and continued until we could get someone in, um, to interpret. And the other thing, I think, that would be interesting, if you guys want to continue to look at this, sometimes we'd have people from other countries who couldn't hear, and so they didn't speak American Sign Language, they spoke a different form of Sign Language for their country, and so we'd sometimes have to have two types of, two layers of translations going on, because we're trying to figure out the sign that they spoke in their country and then converting that to us, and so there were a lot of different challenges. But I want to thank you for bringing this to my attention. I took Sign Language when I was in high school, and I didn't know that we had such a shortage in Nebraska. So, I think we definitely need to look at this and look at our local school boards and see which languages that they're teaching and if they are teaching Sign Language, and so thank you for putting it on my radar, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members? Well, Whitney and Reese, thank you.
Thank you.
You have bright futures ahead.
Thank you.
Continue the good work.
Thank you so much.
You girls have a good day. Going back to school?
Thank you.
And thanks to the moms who got them here. Commissioner, I think we'll be moving back to Agenda Item 2.2, Report on the Rules, and if you want to finish your Commissioner's Report.
All right, so as I get back, if you ever get discombobulated, I guess I have to get combobulated again, is that how that works? So, so I'll get back set here, but great presentation, I'm, I'm super excited for that, uh, so thanks again to the presenters, so. The report on rules is actually in your Agenda Items, and you will see, if I can get it to open anyway, um, uh, we have awaiting approval from the Attorney General's Office on, on Rule 24 regarding certificate endorsements that the Board passed, I forget the exact time we did that, but still in front of the AG, and then, uh, still waiting on Rules One and Rules Two to be approved by the Governor, and that's all I have on, on the Rules Report. And then, if you want me to move on?
Yes.
I'll actually invite Lain Carr up to talk about, um, the next item, 2.3, excuse me, 2 point, whichever it is. I'm not combobulated yet, so it's okay.
Welcome, Lain.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so we are going to be speaking. I wanted to provide a quick update to you all on the first year implementation of the Purple Star Schools Act and Recognition Program. I just want to be real quick here, I have a couple of slides, and those should be posted here for you as well, but really, today, I just want to provide a little bit of context around Purple Star, the recognition program that was, that will be implemented this fall, share with you a little bit about the timeline, and then just answer any questions that you all might have. So, just a little bit about the Purple Star Schools Act. This is our logo that we are using, and this was a bill that was passed in 2021, but even if we take a step back, let's talk about why this is such an important, um, conversation and recognition program. So, each year in Nebraska, about 4,000 students are military connected, and military connected student is a student who has a parent, um, at least one parent, that is in a current or former member of the armed forces, the Nebraska National Guard, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, and then Space Force, which is our newest branch of the military. They are also students that maybe lost a parent who was killed in the line of duty. So, those 4,000 students each have unique needs, many of which are transitions, coming in and out, moving with their parents, um, from place to place, and so schools, therefore, have the need to respond differently and, and serve those unique needs in a little bit different way, which is why we're excited to be implementing the Purple Star Schools Act, which is meant to recognize those schools that are serving our military-involved students and serving their families as well. So, this was signed, as I said, in 2021, and, um, it is a recognition program for public and non-public schools, so we're sharing this information out with schools, and then more importantly than just the recognition is the supports that we also want to be providing to our schools and districts on how to better serve these students and their families. And you can see the qualifications here, it's around having somebody who's really going to own the process of serving these students, meeting them where they are, creating, you know, unique plans for their transition into the school, as well as a, a website or a page on their website that shares those resources for students and families as they come into the community. There should be also a transition program, and again, many districts already have these, and we're going to be providing some resources and information on how they could stand those up, as well as professional learning, and then doing one of the following, which I just think is a really cool part of this program, recognizing April as the Military Child Month, or November as the Military Family Month, and then hosting events, or creating a resolution at the local level that is supporting military-connected students, and/or partnering with a local installation, and getting veterans, getting military-involved , uh, community members into the school as well. So, our timeline- So our timeline, we are, uh, we wanted to provide this update to you all, let you know that this is the, the plan for moving forward for this year. And then we're going to close those applications in early November so that we can share out and recognize those schools in November as well. We also want to think about ways that we can continue to support schools in this. So, you know, this is a first year, this is kind of a quick turnaround, and we want all schools to be Purple Star schools so that we can make sure we're serving, um, military-involved and military-connected students. And then continuing to raise awareness, right? So there's so many different parts to this conversation, different supports for our veterans, different supports for their families, and the unique needs of these students as well. So I wanted to just share this as a quick update to you all and, um, see if there were any questions about this. I'm sure we'll come back, um, in November and share some of our, uh, early results.
Lisa?
Um, first of all, I want to thank Senator Carol Blood for bringing this to NDE. And looking at what you just did, what you just showed us, and what NDE and, uh, with you as lead doing, coming from a military family that moved about every two and a half years. There was only one transition where we didn't have support, uh, as a school student in a large school. And you just feel all alone, left out. And so thank you for doing such a marvelous job lining up these events, activities, and resources for these students and families. Thank you.
I'll go ahead. Lain, um, do we have a sense of how many schools in Nebraska currently have students that are military-involved?
I'm sure we have that data somewhere, Patty, and we could get that for you as well.
That'd be great, thank you.
Lain, I did not follow this legislation perhaps like I should have, so I just have a couple of questions. If someone becomes a Purple Heart School, what benefit or incentive do they get for doing that?
So it's just a recognition, I don't want to say just a recognition, but it would be the designation, basically. So the schools will be listed on our website, we'll also have that, um, logo that we have. And we're thinking about ways that we can celebrate them out with, you know, for example, the blue, uh, blue ribbon schools that are from the US Department of Ed. Those schools get a prominent banner. So we're thinking about ways that we could recognize schools better with something, right?
So on the fiscal note for the legislation, I, do you know what we asked for as an agency? Or what, if there was any financial component to the fiscal note on that legislation?
I don't believe that there was, and, you know, I'm double checking with Brian, just, you don't recall that there was a fiscal note that...
Yeah, yeah, I'm not aware of any.
Okay. And then my last question then is, so, I'd probably get myself in trouble. But one of, have we, as an agency, as we're looking at our SIR funds and different types of funding sources that we received this year, and when we're looking at how we distribute those funds, have we considered looking at schools that serve military families as an input or a consideration when determining how much funds a school could get to be able to help them support the additional, um, challenges that come with serving military families?
And Lain's probably best to answer that one, so go ahead, Lain.
Yeah, you bet. So not directly, but we have been spending quite a bit of funds. And I know the commissioner is going to be updating you on some of those, um, investments that have been made over the past several months. We've been doing a lot with transitions and thinking about, uh, the supports that are needed for mental health, transitions, family and community engagement. So I would say not directly, Jacqueline, but we have been, um, in a roundabout way serving some of those mo- mobile students, students that are experiencing trauma, et cetera.
And then, so with, I guess, again, kind of, I'm always trying to see the big picture. If we see that this is a priority, the legislation passed, are there other places where we have tried to take that priority and incorporate it into other things that we're doing?
I, I think yes. I mean, the dynamic of responsiveness to legislation that passes, right? When, when, we weren't necessarily part of the, the conversations that took place as that was moving on. We might have been asked kind of along the way. But I think you raised a really good point of, what are the state's priorities? And how do we fit into those different things? What are the other things that are happening that we can help leverage resources that we have to meet those overall objectives? And I think that's a, a very good point.
Thanks.
Okay, Agenda Item 2.5.
Yeah, what I'm going to recommend is we go ahead and take a brief break and get you settled here, so, so I can be assistive on the, the meeting stuff. And we'll just do, if, if it'd be all right, five minutes, I think is plenty, so. All right, we'll go ahead and start, um, I, this, uh, this item is to talk a little bit about the SIR funds and kind of where we're at, at this moment in time. Um, I asked Lain to kind of stay up here, as Lain's been kind of critical to the, the efforts in applying for the different rounds of funding that were available, thinking through the structures that we would have to have. And so, uh, as, as I speak, there might be a couple of questions that, that Lain is able to address, um, more effectively. I do have a, a document, in fact, this, uh, document that's attached in, in the information. I'll, I'll kind of talk through it, but board members, you're welcome to look at that. One of the things that just, um, to think back eighteen months and to think about, uh, you know, what, not just what the country, but the world's kind of experienced with, with COVID and, uh, you know, the sadness of, of the changes that happened. I, you know, I kind of want to start by saying just how proud I am of the schools across the state of Nebraska and the work that they've done to ensure that we could return to school. I, I remember, um, probably about April, uh, end of April of 2020, not, not knowing for sure how all of that was going to play out. And I, I will just say, uh, across the state, and I think universally so, there was just very much a will to figure it out and how to get back in place and, and start serving students most effectively. Um, I also know that the impacts on students, um, are not always equal across, uh, uh, across these times and these moments. And obviously, the, anything that, that created challenges for students and families that existed before the pandemic were, in many ways, doubled, tripled, you know, enhanced even, even further. And so it's really important that we're able to think through these, uh, these moments in time and try to think of the, how the resources that now have become available are, are also important. The CARES Act, the first funds that were available, uh, to the part, to, to the, well, states and to education entities across the, the country came, um, you know, fairly quickly. And, and the amount of funds that were available to the state of Nebraska at that point was $65 million. And we use those funds across, you know, there were, there's approaches to that, that they have to be used in schools in certain ways. And, but really, the intention was that we'd find a way to address the current needs of, of, that schools had. Schools got those funds basically on the title distribution level. That's something that kind of stays throughout the, the funding formula and the, the expectations, um, from Congress at that point in time. And so there was about $59 million that went directly to schools. And there's about $6 million that was set aside at the statewide level to do those funds. We can get into the details of how that worked, but a lot of the things that we were doing in the summer of 2020, thinking of resources, thinking of different ways that we could ensure that students had access to, to broadband, thinking of different, different things that could be done, where we really set a framework at that time underneath Launch Nebraska. And so a lot of the information that I even talk about today, you can see some of those results on our launchne.com website, because that's where we provided guidance to schools and interacted with schools over those times. And it is really hard to imagine, or even, it's not hard to imagine, I don't know how to best describe this, but we went into a, a mode where we were communicating with schools on a, you know, pretty much a, a daily basis, a weekly basis myself, live on Zoom calls, having conversations, what do we need to do? A lot of unknowns, obviously, that were taking place, and a lot of concerns. One of the first concerns I remember surfaced in the, in that summer was the desire to serve special ed students, uh, in person in the state. And that was a really, really tough time for, uh, for students that needed that. Certainly, most benefited from that in-person, uh, opportunity to learn. And, and I just remember the tension with that and the, the importance of getting there. And we had people doing amazing things across the state, trying to balance those particular needs. And I, you know, at that point in time, there was no guarantees that there be other money even available to school. So I, I remember saying, hey, look, this is, if we get back in, we can start to assess what those challenges are. By the fall, uh, there was a lot of conversation of additional resources that might come through federal appropriations, and we didn't really know. And if you remember, it was actually in December 2020 where, uh, you know, these all have acronyms, but I always could call it SIR 2. The second round of funds came into place. Um, that was called the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act. You know, so that got named Carissa, I guess, is the way that we look at that one. But, but in that total allocation, that really became available shortly after that in, in December into the next year, and there was 243 million. Um, again, those funds were, um, given out to schools underneath the Title Funding Program. Um, and the allocation to districts in that case was 218 million. That went out through Title, and there was a $24 million set aside for, 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 for the state to be able to do statewide, um, responsibilities on that front. And we started that application process, and I, I remember it pretty well, because I think I was in front of the Appropriations Committee or one of, one of, maybe a joint committee of, of the legislature working together to understand what the impacts were going to be. And so at that point in time, um, we had heard that maybe there'd be this other third round of funding that would become available, but it wasn't quite known. And we laid out a framework at that time with our partners, uh, partners with, uh, a lot of different entities that were involved, schools included in that, saying what are the most important things, uh, that, that we should be considering at this moment in time. And so for that, that became our framework. And then in March, and that's, I remember, I think it actually happened while I was in the meeting, that that, that the American Rescue Plan was actually passed or signed. I don't remember the exact moment in time, but, and we were learning of these other funds that were coming. So they got stacked, one on top of the other. Uh, especially those last two, uh, funding rounds became really, uh, closely linked together in a lot of ways. But that American Rescue Plan included then $546 million to, to the state, with $492 million going out through the Title Allocation Funding Approach. And $54 million of those funds became available for the state, uh, for, for statewide use, right? So, so all of those things, i- it, it happened pretty quickly. The, the, the interesting part of the application process is there wasn't an application process to the federal government, right? Uh, at least on the first rounds. Actually, the, the funds really just ended up showing up to the state, and then you had to build a plan. And there's a lot of questions, I, I attended an appropriations hearing. The state has other funds, these are, these are just education ones, right? There are other funds available to the state to do things. And, uh, one of the, well, the person who runs Legislative Fiscal Office, he, he spoke to this, Tom Burke was his name, spoke to it, and he said, "I'm the one to throw a wet blanket on these things. You have to spend these funds within the categories of, of what the federal government would say." And I, I can tell you, I, I know with, uh, Brian Halsted, um, over the years on federal funds, you always have this, you know, important role to play at the department to make sure that schools are spending them in alignment with what the federal government says, and at the same time creatively, right? Along the lines of what would be most beneficial to our students. And so that's the work that we've undertaken, uh, and continue to undertake as part of the responsibilities we have as a, as an education agency, as a state education agency, to ensure that those funds are being, uh, distributed according to the law, ensure that they're being used in ways that are most helpful for, for the state of Nebraska, and that we have, you know, a window of time in which these funds are available. And so on the, each, each funding source kind of, uh, went to one year and then to the next and to the next. So the very first SIR 1, uh, time period would have started in April of 2020 and should be expended, or at least encumbered, by September of 2022. The next round was January 21, and would have to be encumbered by September of '23. And the final round, SIR 3, or, or ARP, uh, would be March of '21 when it started and encumbered by September of, of 2024. So there's a three-year window of time with each round of funds that comes, with some overlap, obviously, in those timeframes. So it's important to know that, because the other part of it is that the US Department of Ed, uh, then required certain provisions to be done by schools in certain ways, certain provisions to be done by the state. Part of the responsibilities, again, for us, from an agency standpoint, is to make sure that those, uh, funds are being used appropriately. So we, we had an application process that schools also went through to try to align that application with, with the expectations that we had overall. But also part of the expectation, I think, for us, and I, I'm not going to go through every detail of how that has to be done within, within ARP, because I may put you to sleep pretty quickly on that. But the, the, the responsibility is real for us, right? That these are accounting dynamics that, that we have a responsibility for as a state. And I think as we, as we kind of watch the rest of the, uh, leveraging points that we have against the state funds, other funds that are coming into play from the federal level, we want to be that type of partner. And, and again, earlier this week, I was able to testify very briefly. I think I had three minutes and no questions in front of the Appropriations Committee, just to outline a few things. And I want to, I wanted to share a little bit about, um, how we went about engaging with folks on identifying the themes. This might be where I ask Lain to share a few insights on, on that as he, he and the timeframe that was required underneath, um, American Rescue Plan and our, our engagement with different communities and, and different approaches. We did several different things, but we ended up with a, kind of a set of priority areas. And then, Lain, I'll have you kind of talk about how we arrived at those priority areas, perhaps. But the priority areas that we ended up with were really addressing, kind of, what are the comprehensive mental health services? That was one of the biggest concerns that our schools raised for their families, really, right? It's not just that these things are taking place in schools, but how are we supporting families in the, in this particular time? Uh, family and community engagement, um, we settled on that because we're looking for different ways, like our before and after-school programs, for instance, is a requirement, uh, underneath the ARP funds. And again, how would we do that most effectively? But again, what were we hearing from, from our communities about that particular work? One thing we definitely heard was around professional learning and the teacher pipeline. Just worried about whether or not there were enough folks to do, uh, that, that classroom work. It's been a very stressful time on teachers, they've done remarkable things in classrooms uh, in the, in the last eighteen months. It's been a, I think, a, a heroic lift of what's happened in our school settings. See, I see you have a question.
I just want to clarify what I'm hearing. Are you talking about the NDE money? Or at this point, the priorities or for the schools? It's the NDE?
Kind of both.
Okay.
And what I'd share with you is, we tried to frame it so it's a partnership between the schools and the NDE that we could leverage against one another for those, those types of services. So yes, that's a great point. And so, um, but we will talk about specifically the NDE portion too. But within these big, big priority areas, I think that was, uh, really important. Uh, we, we know, and in fact, I think over the next few weeks, we'll be able to have, uh, what I'll call a COVID impact study on assessment. Nebraska is one of the few states that was able to conduct statewide assessment. I, I actually don't know of another, so, but I'm going to say one of a few, just not to be, um, to be too wrong there. But, um, we conducted statewide assessments, so we have an idea of what the impacts were on learning across the state. Not a, not a perfect picture, never can be a perfect picture, but on our 308 assessment, um, early on, we could see that, uh, we were concerned about what would the impacts were on early literacy, early, early readers, right? I mean, that's not a, maybe a huge surprise, but we actually do have data, I think, that will begin to back that up. Uh, math as well, right? I mean, in the, in those areas, and I, I guess we, we've, I've used the phrase before, but if you're not busy learning math, you're busy forgetting math. And, and so for our students, even at the early years, that's an important part of, of that. And so any disruptions that we've seen, um, have to be somewhat addressed. And again, that's the purpose of these funds, both for the state and for, for schools overall, to think about those, those things, and how can we accelerate that learning? And how can we, uh, help ensure that we're addressing, uh, any of those, any of those challenges? And then last, a, a big one for us and for the state has been around data infrastructure and systems. And ensuring that, number one, we can meet the requirements that, that we have to do from that state level, but also thinking about how we from that state level, but also thinking about how we can make those improvements to, to ensure that information's being shared for school districts, again, like the, like the data around assessment, to have a good sense of how that's working and make sure that, that those investments can be made. There's also, oddly enough, in the midst of all this, a lot of concern about technology and security, right? We've seen, you know, in these times of disruption, you actually see that other disruptions happen, and you've seen ransomware and all sorts of things. And so that's actually a substantial concern for school districts and data privacy and anything else. Just being aware and trying to, trying to be able to use these resources to help on any of those fronts that help provide stability in the education environment is, is part of the overall work. But I might ask Lain just to speak a little bit about groups that were engaged, how we went about that process, and, and give folks a little bit of that background, too.
You bet. So for our specific portion of this, and this is around page three in the document that's on SPARC, but our process for our application for ARP actually mirrored districts as well. So the US Department of Ed, and actually, the law was very clear about the stakeholders that needed to be engaged. And stakeholders should always be engaged, right? It's not a, it's not a always just a must-have, it's a should-have and a should-do. And so we actually asked for an extension over the summer so that we could make sure that not only our application, but also that, that our districts were submitting, and they actually just submitted in September, and I can talk about that if you'd like, but that our districts had enough time. And we also wanted school to come back so that they could talk to their students, right? Super important, obviously, really necessary to get our students' voices here. So we surveyed our schools and our public in, for the CARES Act. And then, as the commissioner said, we really have been kind of considering Carissa or SER2 and ARP, SER3 sort of together, because they kind of all came at the same time. So we spent a lot of time in May and June hosting roundtable sessions with administrators, with our teachers, with principals and superintendents. We spoke with civil rights organizations and really wanted to hear from them, specific needs for the populations that they represent. We spoke with parents. We spoke with parents that are bilingual and perhaps that English is not their only, is not their first language. And so had a wide variety of voices come to the table. In addition to a survey that we put out, that had almost 450 respondents, and you can click on the hyperlink there and see kind of where those respondents were from, who they represented, and some of the high-level data. But then really just took all of that information and some of the projects that we had already been investing in over the, over the past several months, aligned that to our framework for renewal and acceleration, and then ultimately came to these five high-level priorities. So Commissioner, I don't know if you want me to talk any further about schools and their processes or anything else?
Yeah, it actually might help, because I know schools, then we had a deadline for schools to actually submit their, their applications, I guess, to us, even though it's not exactly the right term for that, but their plans essentially to us. Maybe talk briefly about that.
Sure. There's a question, Commissioner.
So I have some pretty specific questions, and I could ask them now. So as you're kind of going through this, you could cover it, or I can just sit and kind of listen, and then we may have to revisit it. So can you let me know what is best for you?
Yeah, I, I think it'd be great if you go ahead and ask the questions, and then if we, we can either address it right now or kind of where it fits and the rest of the information.
Got it. Okay. So when you kind of are talking about the process, can you outline what schools were required to submit? Like, what are their, what was their initial request? Or what did they have to give to us in order to be able to spend the money that they received? What are their ongoing reporting requirements to us to show us what they did? Do we have to reprove what they're doing? Or do we have any remedy if they spend money other than how they said that they were going to? And then how are we assessing? I, I have a couple of questions about the uses of funds and our priorities. So I'm assuming the priorities that we identified are historically marginalized, students with disabilities, English learners, economically disadvantaged. But then it goes on to say approve uses of funds. And those two could be read in conjunction with one another, or they could be read separate from one another. And so I want to know how we are tying those categories, because I feel like that's how we decided, we voted on as a board to distribute those funds, based on looking at those categories. But if the uses of funds, if the schools aren't necessarily tying them to the approved uses, then there's a disconnect there. So I would like to know kind of how all of that, what is our mechanism for applying, our mechanism for compliance? And then also, how are the two connect, the uses of funds going to be connected to those groups? So if, as you're kind of going through your questions, you can answer those. I won't have to kind of, I might have follow-up questions, but it might help guide kind of what I'm thinking. But thank you.
Yeah. And, and actually, I, I think it's actually a good point to talk about the application process. So each, each of the three rounds of funds had slightly different requirements from the federal side. So I'll kind of couch it that way and maybe speak, maybe to the third one in particular, is that's the biggest amount of money. And there will be similarities with how that, that works generally for us. And I, I think I've got another staff member or two here that maybe can help if I go off the rails a little bit. But, but the first part is, number one, I just want you to also realize, so even with federal funds, there's always this responsibility in the agency. So just our normal federal funds would have a similar process, you know? So I'll, I'll highlight that.
So our normal federal funds, we'd have to follow, I believe it's two CFR 200, is that the?
Yeah, you're, you're better than me.
But, so, but some of the CARES Act did not require that level of detail, and so they waived some of those requirements. Some of them for the state came back with ARPA funds, we'll have to utilize those. But I don't know how they, as they relate to SER. So if you could educate me, it would really be helpful, too.
I'll try to describe the infrastructure that we have to do some of those things, and then how kind of we interpret, you know, those responsibilities, too. So the, the first thing is that the federal law reigns kind of supreme for us, right? So if they say a school can do something with the funds, then they can do something with the funds. Even if we say, well, I don't think that's the, the highest and best use of it, right? I mean, we don't necessarily have that ability to, to redirect them if the, if the federal law basically says they can use it for this purpose. We have tried to provide guidance to them along the very set of priorities that we have and, and, and try to go down that particular path. I guess, I don't know a good way to say it, but we can't be more restrictive than the law is on, on those requirements. So that's one thing. The other part is that, just as we do tracking with, with, with federal funds, schools expend funds and then seek reimbursement for those, for those federal funds generally. So there's a, a chance, number one, we look at it on the front end of what they say they're going to spend it for. And then when they seek reimbursement, there's a chance, did they spend it where, where they said they were going to spend those particular funds? And so that's one of the, kind of the checks on, on that overall. Do you have a question on that front? Sorry. Oh, sorry, I just say, the, the, again, because each one has slightly different requirements, you know, we have teams kind of tracking. And by the way, when I say teams, it's largely the same people within the agency trying to track each one of those, uses of those funds and ensuring that they're being appropriately applied according to the plans that schools set forth. But it might help to kind of talk through what we did with ARPA a little bit different. We asked schools to put in a pre-plan in Ju-, in June, I think, and say, say, "We intend to apply for these funds." And then they had a period of time to engage with local communities, with their stakeholders at their local level, and set out some of their particular priorities. And I think that might kind of help. And then I'll, I can come back to the, the other portion of that.
Sure. So for you all and also for our public, the best resource for all of this information, we've consolidated all of our webpages on ESERS 1, 2, and 3, and it's just education NE.gov backslash ESR, E-S-S-E-R. So specifically for SER3, it was very different. It actually required the NDE to put forth a plan. It also came with some very specific stipulations and ways that districts must use their funds. So for example, districts are required to expend 20% of their funds on learning loss, what the, what the legislation calls learning loss, which comes with connotations for evidence-based interventions that they must provide, et cetera. So our NDE team spent a ton of time from around April, May, June into July, our entire, we had an entire strand of support for districts during Administrator Days. And then we also created several resources that walk districts through this process. We call it a budget roadmap. So as the commissioner said, there were two parts to, to the application. The first was a safe return-to-school plan, which our districts submitted to us and said, this is how we, and many, by the way, like Commissioner said, most all had them already. So it was dusting them off, bringing them up to date, working really closely with their local health departments to get those ready. And then the second part was the use of funds. And that's what really our districts spent a lot of time into the fall, and those were due on September 15. And we had our districts submit those. And now our team is, is checking them, going through them, sending them back, and working with districts on pieces that might need to be tweaked. So as Commissioner said, you know, there's kind of a two-part check on our districts. The first is, does what you say fit the appropriate uses of funds? And then the second check is in the backend when we reimburse our districts or don't. So again, lots of time new this year was a requirement, or with this round of funds, was a requirement for stakeholder engagement and very specific stakeholders that needed to be engaged. We asked districts to think through a theory of action. So if we do this investment, we believe it will have this outcome for our students. And then we put a premium on high-quality instructional materials, lots of information out there around evidence-based practices, because we wanted to make it easier for our districts to select and vet some of those interventions, especially with that 20% piece as well. The last thing that I will say that I think is a really useful part of the ARP is a six-month requirement for revisiting and digging back into the plans. So districts, on a six-month kind of process, will be engaging with us and then re-engaging back with their stakeholders to say, are we on the right track, not only with our health and safety plan, but with the plan that we have for these, for this use of funds? And, you know, districts would have probably done that anyway. And that's just best practice of looking at data, new data as it arises, re-engaging stakeholders. But for us, it's a, it's an opportunity to, you know, redirect and, and change course if we need to, or tweak things as we may as well.
So, go ahead. Sorry, I see a question.
And if there's a better time to answer these, I can wait till the end, but two questions. One, during NDE days, part of the administrators' conference, I did listen to your finance team go through this process of reimbursement, and I was very impressed, you know, that there is accountability and scrutiny of how the funds are used in that way. I wondered, I mean, have, has there been a case where something's been bounced back? Or do we have a process for that? I guess that's my first question, and then I have a second one. Do you want me to just go on?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the second one is about learning loss, since these funds are intended for that purpose. And of course, we've all seen on social media, you know, where the money's been used for football fields. And I don't know if that's even true, but I hope not. But I guess, am I correct in thinking that there will be a measurement of that learning loss as a result of our accountability systems and our assessments? I hate this word subgroup, but it's the term that the federal government uses, that we, you know, are measuring how our subgroups are doing. And so there will be an accountability in, in, in measuring their learning loss. Is that right?
Yeah. And, and kind of as I was mentioning before, I'll hit the learning loss concept, too. So there's a 20% of the funds that schools have to be able to demonstrate are approaching learning loss. And so, and again, the federal definition of that is, you know, a little less clear. Obviously, every state in the nation lost the 2020 spring assessments, right? There was not a single state that conducted their, their statewide assessment at that point in time. What we did in Nebraska was actually go, how do we now shift on a plan that we already had in place around what we were doing for through-year assessment on our three-through-eight assessment system? And how can we make the most of the resources that we would be using to ensure that schools are able to test right away in the fall? Part of that's gone to the, the literacy side of our, of our goals as a state prior, or even previous to the pandemic. But the intention of being able to measure where students are at, at the beginning of a year. So we really used resources, aligned the work that we were doing on assessment, and shifted to ensure that there could be assessment being done through the midst of the pandemic and see if we can measure. And again, I wasn't so worried about the accountability at that point, but the real use of the data at a school level to know where students were at and gave us some understanding very early on about, you know, what student performance was looking like in, in the midst of, in the midst of the pandemic. The nice part, I think, for us anyway, is we were able to continue that work and then actually complete our 2021 assessment cycle. And so, again, we had almost 95% of our students do that assessment, which is unheard of across the country, right? I mean, that's just, that just wasn't happening in other places. And so what we'll be looking at is using that largely as a baseline, right? I mean, that's our first solid measure of how students did on, on the three-through-eight. And again, that's from a statewide look. Schools have other looks at, at data that, that give them a chance to kind of engage in that. But it gave us that chance to, to, to continue to build out that as a baseline of that information. And then as we release and look at that, we'll be able to look at how schools are really doing, are we actually addressing some of those things in learning loss? Now, that, that's, it's not always easy to compare all those different things and put them together, but it gives us a, a pretty good leg up on, on trying to move that forward. So on that particular point, that's, that's the approach. And we can tie that back to, hey, look, is that really working for us as a state? Are there other things that we need to be looking at? Even those six-month reviews that are kind of built into the cycle, is this really a good, you know, theory of action? Is it functioning for, for us and for schools overall? I spurred more questions every time I answer one. So this is a...
Lisa?
Glad to get the mask off. I had a question. I'm glad we're addressing, you know, the 20% with learning loss. Are we doing trainings for accelerated learning? We, you talked about best practice, evidence-based, and I believe Lain has explained to us how accelerated learning is a better path. Are we training teachers about a better way to use that strategy?
I'm going to say yes, but it's not just us, right? And so even with schools, as they're doing that particular work with the, a lot of different ways that's taking place. But it's not just around accelerating learning, but learning, different learning modes in the midst of what we're facing, thinking through different strategies with the impacts that our students have really faced. So I don't know that I can frame it just as accelerating learning, but, but improved practices and improved supports for teachers that are dealing with, with the challenges that they're facing in their classroom. So a lot of different aspects to that, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure teachers were getting the support they needed, the training they needed. Thank you.
So I am a visual learner. I have to read things and I have to see it. Like, listening is very difficult for, not difficult for me to listen, but to try to put things in a framework. And I was really hoping, when you said Lain was going to be presenting, or we were actually going to be kind of seeing some numbers and charts and things about kind of the processes. So it might be helpful for me if we can put together some type of report or at least an outline of what we're doing with each program and kind of that process. And, Robin, I did send an email ahead of time saying, here are my questions back on September 25. So I kind of, there, there was a heads up, just so that you know. But I guess my concern, and at least the part I'm not understanding, and we can talk about this at a later date, maybe this requires a separate meeting. If the funds come to the department... If the funds come to the Department of Education and we decide which school districts are going to get what funds, I feel like we do have a layer of control or say-so as the grantee or sub-award of what and how those funds are distributed and what they are used for. And I heard the commissioner say today, well, we can't be more restrictive than the federal. And that seems a little counterintuitive to me when we decide where the money goes. So it seems like we can set those parameters. So I would kind of like to see that layer of where we're saying we, we can't be more restrictive than the federal when it does, the money flows through us. The, the other thing is, and I, I won't just beat around the bush here, I saw where the OPS outline of what they plan to do with these funds. And there were infrastructure costs, there was technology, there was the purchasing of curriculum. And I know the purchasing of curriculum plans had been in their plans before the federal funds even came. And so if we are looking at truly learning loss and how it's going to serve particular groups that are disadvantaged or who have been performing differently, and we see districts that are just making across-the-board investments that aren't specific to those groups that we have outlined, when do we approve and say, it's okay for you to put a new roof, a roof on a building? Because you say that affects air quality for the children in the room, but we've also specifically said, we want to see how learning loss is being captured among those particular groups. So I'm missing our control component here or where we're reviewing this? And then I'd also like to know, kind of to Deborah's position, or at least her question, if, has the money already been distributed to school districts? And if it's not, if it's on a reimbursement basis, at what point are we going to say, we want to see what you've done with the 25% that you had before we issue the next round of 25% or the next 50% to you? Because while your plan initially might have been to do this, if you're putting windows, but the kids are still falling behind because you said you improved air quality, maybe we need to reassess that plan. And so I'm not hearing, I'm kind of hearing what you guys are saying, but I'm not seeing specifically what our process is, what our controls are, and how we're going to look at this going forward. And this isn't a matter of me getting into the day-to-day operations of NDE, but at the same time, these are once-in-a-lifetime opportunities of funds to truly address big-picture gaps. And I want to make sure that we are being good stewards of the resources that we're given. And if that's another conversation for a different day, or a different report, or a different outline, I'd really like to see it. I don't think we need to keep going back and forth here, but I'm not kind of hearing those specific questions or answers.
Yeah. And I think in part, when what I hear you say, and we can walk through in great detail how each one of those kind of processes works. So I, I think on a high level, that this is a good place for us to start, your questions actually, and then a little deeper into the questions is helpful to see what, what else you're interested in. But what I, what I would say, I mean, and I'll, I'll use an example, what I mean, that we can't be more restrictive, right? So if the Fed, if the Congress says you may use it for, like HVAC systems is one of those, right? That we are not in a position to say a school couldn't use it for an HVAC system, that actually underneath federal code. And we've had this conversation back and forth with the US Department of Ed and others that look at how we do it. So those, those are things that are real. The national scene, I think it's actually worth kind of noting that as well. The fact that we work on a reimbursement model is actually one of the big checks that I would recommend every state would have in some fashion, right? And many of them don't. I think Iowa is a neighbor, for instance, in the midst of this. Their schools got all the money, spent the funds, and then came back and said, oh, you didn't spend them the right way. So we have better checks in place than, than many other states. But I'd have to walk you through that and have the, kind of the right team of folks to put that report together to kind of share that with you in a, in a, in a, in a better way for you, I think, so.
But am I correct? And the federal government could say an HVAC system is okay, but the Department of Education and this board, when we approved that formula of who, which school districts were going to get what funds based on how many kids they had receiving free and reduced lunch, et cetera, we could go back, I'm not going to say we're going to retroactively go back, but we do have the ability to say, we've seen your plan, you want to do an HVAC system, we saw this school district's plan, they want to do accelerated learning for kids, we would prefer that we distribute the money this way than for that HVAC, than for an HVAC plan. Like, we do have a control in how we decide where the money goes.
I'm going to say to a certain extent, but I don't, I actually don't believe that we, there's certain things that when we work with the US Department of Ed, that's not the case. Like, we can't be, I mean, they will tell us over and over again, we can't be more restrictive than something that was expressed there. We are asking, and I'm, I'm just going to put this out there too, and working with our team in my kind of national role, these are the same types of questions we get from multiple states. And so we'll be proposing some questions, I guess, to the US Department of Ed about what that guidance is on the backend of this. I can remember telling superintendents, the first two rounds of, especially the first round of funding, was go out and spend it towards these things to get open, right? It was a little clearer, a little smaller kind of purpose. The second round of funding broadened that, you know, pretty dramatically. And I remember saying, because there was a lot of, go spend it quickly, right? And my line became, with my national colleagues as well, was you can spend it quickly or you can spend it wisely, but I'm not sure you can do both. And I think there's kind of this balancing act that's going to take place, and again, not just on education funds, but on funds that are available generally underneath the American Rescue Plan, that that's the balancing act that I think we'll have to kind of keep playing. I, I do think we have some room for guidance and interpretation, and, and we do some of that. I know you asked that question, what do we do, you know, if something's not there? We have a process for that. Without getting into some examples, it's hard for me to, to probably describe that well. But that might be a, what we could bring back in, in kind of a, an update on this, is dive a little bit deeper into what that looks like, dedicate a bit more time for, for you to be able to engage with how that works in our team. And I think that would be probably most helpful for you, so.
And then this, the last thing, as it relates to the funds that NDE withheld, which I believe is 10%, that's a discretionary amount. We don't have to withhold 10%. We could withhold 1%, 2%. That's a choice that we made to keep that for administration. And I understand sometimes that requires additional staff members at the department to monitor these funds, different capacities. And it has to sometimes last over the course of five years to be able to monitor something like that. And so I had hoped that we would be able to, one, see the results of the survey today that we did of the state to ask what they wanted to see done with these funds. And so I don't know if we have that in a report format that we'd be able to review and what, what's, what our stakeholders asked us to do with the federal funds, and then also an outline of what we would do with the $84 million that we withheld and didn't send out to schools.
And we do, actually, that's what the link that Laine had mentioned. So there is a report of, of the survey and that, and that's actually what framed those priority areas. That's, so that, those two things kind of go together. So we'll kind of organize that in a little bit different fashion. But the, the other part is, when we made the decisions to retain those funds, that was, it's not just around administration, it's around providing services to schools directly. So some of what we did in the very first round, we made that decision with the first round, kept that for the second round, maintained that for the third round with the intention of building up that set of resources that are available to schools, not based just on the, on the formula then, but based on things that we can provide scale for. A good example is, schools were really interested in, like, math curriculum. And so we actually, at one point, and this board approved the purchase of Zern Math as part of that, that strategy. So each one of those things comes to pass. But I think what I, what I get is you need to see the big picture and then get down into the weeds on some of those things, I don't mean weeds in a negative way, but to be able to see the, the, each one of those, those contracts in whole, because you're seeing them in parts right now, and I think that's what, what I'm hearing you say.
My last, if I can ask two questions. Could you tell me the link that Laine stated again? Because I tried to put it into the computer and it didn't work, or at least I put it in wrong, so I will own that, if he could just tell me that again. And then the other thing, when the decision is made to keep the 10%, well, 10% for administration, that's actually a federal term, I'm not, that's not Jacqueline's term, it's kind of like, that's the amount you can keep of federal funds. But we, who makes that decision? Is that a board decision, or is that a decision that the department makes? Because I don't remember if we voted on that.
Yeah. It was a decision largely when we started down this path of accepting federal funds that, that we discussed at that time, and we retained that through, so I guess the department made it in that case, yeah.
The link, Jacqueline, is the document that I've been referring to, that the commissioner shared with the Appropriations Committee, is linked in Spark. And then the, the link that will take you to the respondents from the survey is on page three, and it says nearly 450 respondents, and then that's the, the documents. Also on the ESSER webpage, which is just education NE.gov backslash ESSER.
ESSER?
E-S-S-E-R. Yep. E-R. Yep.
Deborah.
Thanks, Patsy. In speaking with some of my friends that are CEOs of nonprofits, I'm hearing lately that they are losing a lot of their social workers and mental health therapists because there's such a need out there and a lot of corporate entities can hire them at a higher rate. And, and so there's just a huge shortage of social workers out there now in the nonprofit world. And I'm wondering, does, do these funds allow for some kind of adjustment of salary level in order to meet the demand since, you know, I, yeah, the scales are changing so much right now?
I don't think I can answer for, for certain. I think that's, but I, I, I think this really was surfaced also in the appropriations hearing the other day, just across the sectors, right? That there's a workforce shortage in a lot of different areas. We're worried, obviously, in those things that impact directly on schools, but we're also worried about our partners being able to have positions that fill those particular needs. So I don't have an immediate answer for, you know, how could they be used for, for those particular things? But I, I don't think we're the only ones trying to consider that right now, so.
Robin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, listening to this conversation really reminds me of, of the importance of having many different thoughts, many different experiences. As I look at this board, you know, of course, there's a lot of educators, but we also have a lawyer, we also have a person of higher education, and we also have a person who's involved in nonprofits and in her experience. And it just reminds me of the importance of a board and, and how we all bring our own experiences to this. Because as I listen to the questions, which by the way are great questions, and, and those are questions I hadn't even given them one bit of thought to. And so I, I just really, I guess, appreciate the board and all of our experiences there. And also, as I listen to this discussion, and my experience, of course, is that of a, of a old retired superintendent. And as I look out there and I see Dr. Edwards from Carney and, and that sort of thing, so, so what I'm going to say is, based on my experiences, and, and I need to keep that in mind when I think about the rest of us and how all of our experiences are different, I really am not as concerned about what the local districts are doing with that money. Because I am truly into local control. I'm truly into the, the goodness of those board members and the goodness of, of those administrators who are now challenged to take on this as another project, another job in their already full plate. And, and so I'm just, I'm really into, I'm, I want to know, how did Kent Edwards at Carney get his money? And how did Dr. Rhodes at Gothenburg get his money? I think I heard quote title, the title formula. So that is my concern, is how, how did Kent get so much more than Gothenburg, Nebraska? I'm saying that facetiously, please. So, so how is, how is that decided? And so that we can give, empower these superintendents, empower these local boards to make the decision at the local level?
Again, if the question on how the title formula works, I can go, we could go into that, but it's really based on title poverty, and poverty counts as students. And so obviously, when you have the scale of students, number one, the, the percentage of poverty is, you know, a big part of that. And so going out underneath that formula, that's not determined by us, that's really determined by the federal law. So then, once they get that amount of money, how they spend those particular funds within the frame that's permitted within federal law, and then to the point about how they apply for it and say what we're going to use it for. It's not so much that when they just use it for the things that are allowed, it's when there's that question mark of, is that one really apply or that one really apply? And that's, that's something I, I think it'd be most telling to actually maybe to bring in a school and kind of have that conversation about how that interaction actually takes place. I get lots of emails from folks going, I can't believe you're blocking this for us, right? I mean, so I know we have stop points where we're going, we're asking questions along the way. And at the same point, at the end of it, if schools kind of follow our processes and understand those things, that we don't have to do quite the same amount of audit work or find audit findings, right? So it's that, we have built some of those things into the process and we can, it's probably best, I just try to describe how we do that well. But we do want schools to have some of that local control to meet their local needs. Obviously, that's part of the, part of the desire for us as well.
Thank you.
Patty.
Thank you. I, I'm not sure if we're ready for kind of a summary statement, but I guess that's where my thinking is at this point. And when you consider the huge influx of money that has come into Nebraska for all of our schools, we're all taxed with a great deal of responsibility, personal and professional responsibility in how that money is spent. But I also believe that, like no other time in our history in American education, because we have money, and money doesn't solve all the problems, but this, this provides us with opportunities to not just correct the wrongs, I guess I will say that way, but more importantly, to reimagine and to sculpt our education system into even a better system than it currently is. And I'm really impressed with the local school districts that I hear, taking that step, their, their first priority is acceleration of learning. But they also recognize there are so many things that they can do differently and better than they have ever done before. So that's the part, I guess, I focus on, is what are we doing with this money to really make a great system even that much better?
I liked your summary so much, so. But I, I think that's our driving point. So I, I just thank you for the discussion. It helps me kind of frame it, what's the next thing I can help you with in a report that would be, get to some of those other kind of details of how that functions and works. Plus, we're going to be in this for a while, I think, as Jacqueline said. But we actually have a responsibility for years on these funds, and you actually, years beyond the, the expenditure side of this, that we will be watching and trying to build on. on as we, as we look at how that impacts our students' learning, as that impacts. We'll be watching other data sets that aren't part of the account, I don't mean it as accountability, but do we have the teachers in the classrooms that we need? Do we have the support systems that we need? Those types of things that I think we can be watching as a, as a statewide, kind of, with a statewide kind of vision for those things and how they would come together is really important.
I wanted to thank each one as well. Because that discussion and those questions really made us analyze this topic from every angle. Lisa, as a teacher, accelerated learning, I mean, every single person approached it from a different way. And I thought it was so informative and all the synapses were clicking. And so, thank you very much. Great discussion.
I'll, I'll go on, I'll move on. I think item 2.6. And what I wanted to highlight here, so as part of the, in regular, I'll say, well, it's regular annual process to ask for a deficit request to the legislature, meaning that something happened within the biennium that we have to go back and ask for authority for or resources for in the, in the midst of a biennium that wasn't part of the particular budget. I, I'm going to tell you, our big, our big item is our move, right? As we moved, and, and I don't have to rehash all of those details, but a pretty sudden and determined move with a lot of other state agencies that we're also having to move at the same time. We've made that move. We are working really hard to try to get set up in the, in the new office space. And I think Robin, by chance, had a, had a chance to go see, see that. We're, we're in the process of being able to, I guess, finish up the design work for what I would call, what was the sixth floor of the state office building, where we were at before. We're kind of cycled into the, as Building Division works on other agency moves, our, our turn is coming for, for that kind of next phase of our work. And so we're excited for that. It actually puts us in a position to go, hey, what, what are our actual costs that we're going to expand? Or what do we project so we can get that in front of the legislature? And so a big portion of our budget deficit request is just making sure that we've checked those boxes and been, been able to ask for the resources as part of the cost of that particular move. There's, you know, kind of a few other items that, that are kind of typical, like, that we might run into if you have retirements. There's like a typical thing to go ask for retirements and other things that have a cost at the end of, end of someone's career on those fronts. Those are just kind of the typical ask, but the less than typical one is about our move. And so I just wanted to highlight that for you as well, so.
Which page was that on of the agenda?
That's on, well.
The detail.
At 2.6. Oh, the, is the detail, oh, let's see. I don't know where that's located on the, I don't have Jen in the room, do I? Maybe I do.
Should the attachment to the data now?
To the what?
The rationale.
I can't. Is it included as an attachment in our agenda attachments?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look for it.
Yeah. Yeah, and actually, now that I was able to pull it up myself too. So it has all of the, well, I'll credit Jen with her ability to put some of that, all those moving parts into a nice graphic form, so you can see it there. By the way, just us requesting, it doesn't guarantee we get it, right? It's just our ability to ask for it and, and then work on the appropriations process as part of that.
So is it the proposed agenda item rationale, October, dated October 8th, 2021? It says estimated cost, the department is requesting an adjustment. Is that the, the letter we're talking about?
On, on 5.7B, there's an attachment that is the 2022 mid-biennium budget adjustments at a glance.
Is it, okay, let me look for it.
At least that's the one I was looking at and for some of those additional details, so.
We don't have to wait for me, I'll keep looking.
All right. Well, and, and you can certainly, if there's more that we need to talk about that, we can get, make sure you have that information. The, the main point is that I just wanted to make you aware, hey, look, that, we're going through that process, make sure that we're putting our, putting that request in as, as required by, required by kind of how the appropriations process works, so. And I was, before I said that was included in my presentation, I made, made sure. So that is what I have for the report. And I do very much appreciate the conversations we've had today. Thanks.
Agenda item six, standing committee reports. Agenda item 6.1, policy committee. The policy committee did not meet, therefore, there is no report from the policy committee. Legislative, or item 6.1, legislative committee, they also did not meet, therefore, there is no report from the legislative committee. Item 6.3, commissioner's appraisal report. The commissioner's appraisal committee did not meet, therefore, there is no report from the commissioner's appraisal committee. Agenda item 6.4, AQUEST teaching, learning, and serving domain committee. Lisa, please provide a report from the AQUEST teaching and learning committee domain, committee meeting.
Okay. AQUEST teaching, learning, and serving committee met and the committee had received updates and information from NDE staff on two items. The first item was an update on the math standards presented by a staff member, and the process is in the beginning phases, and the committee will be bringing discussion on this topic to the board at a future time. The second item was an update on the Praxis from Brad Dirksen, which requires the teacher, Praxis for teacher certification. The committee reviewed the history of the use of the tests in Nebraska and recent efforts to change policy related to the use of the test. The committee briefly discussed other methods to determine basic skill competency for teachers and expects to bring discussion on the topic to the full board in the near future. Brad Dirksen did a fantastic job presenting the update on Praxis and, and certification. Work has been going on behind the scenes, I believe, since 2018. It's a 12-page update with lots of answers to questions that we've asked in the past. So if you haven't taken time to read that, it's under our committee. Brad did an outstanding job. So that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Lisa. Deborah?
Thank you, Lisa. I know some of you know I've been asking for many months about getting an update on the Praxis and hoping that we would get working on it. So I'm so glad that your committee is. I had asked for an update on where we are now, and I just, can you give us some highlights of Brad Dirksen's report? So I understand not only where we are now, but how quickly we can move forward? Because I know he's been working with other partner agencies. And so how soon, and, and what's the vision, I guess, is what I'm looking for.
Well, I, I can tell you that it's been a while, but I contacted colleges and university systems a while ago, and I, I believe the list that I have reflexed those of what Brad said without looking at 12 pages and finding certain things. So these were pretty much addressed in Brad's report as possibilities and also from UNK, UNO, and Winston State College. So the reason, and most of it, they, they didn't want the Praxis, so these are reasons why. Teacher candidates already demonstrate basic skill proficiency well beyond and inclusive of those in the Praxis one through the completion of the required general ed courses, required advanced writing courses, and required educator preparation courses. And some colleges require a 2.5 to get into the teacher prep. One of the suggestions was to raise that to 2.75. Endorsement classes demonstrate teachers candidacy competencies through a variety of practicum experience, PK 12 schools. Teacher candidates are observed frequently by faculty instructional coaches. Praxis core tests are expensive, $150 for each test. Financial aid does not cover the cost of the Praxis. An example that was given from, I believe it was UNO, Hawaii has used institutional accreditation to demonstrate teacher candidate proficiency and basic skills. California has eight different ways that they can demonstrate and choose. And candidates have voiced great concerns about the Praxis Core being a barrier to becoming a teacher. Both the NACTE and NCTE have had discussions about the elimination of the Praxis Core. So that generally gives you an idea of representative college, university, and some of the things that Brad had mentioned.
Thank you, Lisa. I think that was a really good summary for everyone to understand the history. I guess I'll just say, in terms of for us, I mean, it's, it's been a priority for us for several years now. We understand we need to get rid of it. I guess we're there, I know he's involved in discussions. Some have suggested to me that we have the authority to just get rid of it. Dr. Blumstead is shaking his head, no. But I guess what are we seeing as, you know, what are the immediate steps that are being discussed so that, you know, because we, we are, we've been talking about this for so long.
Well, I think if you go back and read the detailed information in Brad's update, it gives you some direction. And all 12 pages, I think, would answer your concerns. But I'm going to turn it over to the Commissioner and explain a little bit more. We've had so many other things going on, and this has been in the background going on since 2018.
Well, and probably even longer than that, actually. So the, the dynamics of basic skills, you know, some type of test that does that is actually a requirement within law, so I, I want to highlight that. Now, we have some ability to think about how we would change the rule, which we've done over time and not been successful on that. And so I think what we're trying to lay out, and we can bring this back, there is a legislative portion of this that I think needs to be addressed. And so there was a hearing that Senator Panzi-Brooks, or at least on her particular LR, was part of that conversation. And so really good ideas that came out with a lot of our partners that are interested in working on that. And then also, there is work that we need to do on that, if there is going to be an assessment. We do, I feel like that over time, we've painted ourselves in a corner by putting a specific test into a rule and reg. That test, over time, evolves and change, which actually changes the bar somewhat over time and, you know, puts us in this position. And really, I think we need an option for some, you know, whether you want to call it portfolio approach, coursework, other ways. I don't really believe that tests should make decisions for folks. They should inform decisions, right? And I think that's part of the, that dynamic. And so we'll keep working on it. I actually think we'll be able to lay out some of the, the set of strategies. And there's a couple of different meetings I know that, that Brad is having with these partners. And I think in November, maybe we can bring something for the full board discussion on that front. So hopefully that helps.
Madam Chair, may I continue with, yeah? My report is finished, but there's a lot, like the Commissioner said, changing the law. It isn't always an easy task. But I think by having LR 157 come forward and invited guests from around the state who had the same concern and want to go the same direction, as the Commissioner reiterated, had great ideas. So having the legislature resolution in line with what we want to do with NDE, and by collaborating and partnering, whatever we choose will be the best for what teachers need before they teach children.
Thank you, Lisa. Deborah?
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Dr. Blumstead. That was very helpful. And I just want to say, I mean, as we all know, I mean, my interest is just the crisis mode of, you know, our schools needing more teachers. I'm not telling anybody anything new. And I, we have, every month, we look at some exceptions that we need to accommodate a school in order to keep a teacher, add a teacher, and while they can continue their work while they're in their teaching position. And, and pretty frequently now, the Praxis is something that is the barrier to somebody being able to teach and requires special approval. And so we've been discussing that in our student success committee for many months now. And so I am very excited that there's going to be a lot of movement. So thank you.
Yeah, we've been talking about it for years, so.
Also, just to make you aware, there is a conference coming up that you might wish to attend on student, student, teacher retention, diversity, and the Praxis in Carney. And I believe it's October 27th.
Yes.
And Dr. Sarah Skreta is leading that. And I know several of us have registered for it. And I think that is also going to raise awareness about just how urgent Deborah changing the Praxis is. And I'm happy for that. I'm glad that she's doing that in higher education. Jacqueline?
So my questions are more kind of procedural or policy-driven. I've heard our position on the Praxis. And I, I want to be clear about who decides who the our is, like whose position? Is it the department's position? Is it the board's position? Is the board and the department aligned on what we want to see going forward with the Praxis? And so I don't know, I'd like to know who drives those decisions of whether or not to request a legislative change, whether or not to promulgate a change to the rule in regulation that we currently have and to initiate that process. Does that start with the committee? Does that start with a vote of the board? Or does that, or is that moved on the department's motion? I mean, does the department move to do these things? And if we want something to happen, do we need to come together as a board and officially vote on the position that we're going to take or to decide what our position is going to be? Because I don't know that we have that, and if we do, maybe someone can point me to it. But we can talk about it, but unless we've decided what our pathway forward is going to be and the exact steps that we're going to take, I think we're still just having the conversation we were having three years ago. And so can someone kind of give me the roadmap and how we get to that decision? Because I know there are teachers who like the Praxis, and there might be teaching groups who think this is, we don't want to lower the standard. I know someone wanted to not have bar exams for lawyers. I disagreed with that. We have to have a standard for our profession. And so I want to just kind of be clear who we're speaking for and that we've listened to everyone before we make a decision or move forward. And I, I haven't heard that. And so if someone could clear that up for me, it would be helpful.
Lisa?
You're right, we do need a legislative change. We do need a legislative change. There is a process, and it came to our committee. And NDE has been working on it. But as far as the process, I'd like the commissioner to lay that out before us, if you will, please.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm going to get to it. I think the practical question is, right? How do we actually make a decision what the board's decision is on this? What I would, what I would say is we're working on a proposal to bring forward to the board. That would be kind of our, here's a, here's a, a plan for the board's consideration. Is this the direction you want to go? Which would include, actually, we've, we've had our legislative kind of rules and regs and legislative positions on these things. But I think in this case, I think you mentioned roadmap. That's what I would intend bringing forward and saying, hey, board, is, is this what you want to go do? And then you could take a proactive yes or, or no on, on that particular approach.
Lisa?
Um, I don't want the public to think that we want to lessen the quality of determining who our teachers are in the classroom. That is never, we don't want to lower the quality. We want alternatives, whether it's one alternative, and the praxis could still be, for those that love the praxis, that could still be a benchmark. It could be, you know, two or three things that don't lessen the quality of the teachers, but demonstrate that they're ready to be in the classroom.
Deborah?
I just want to say thank you, Lisa, for emphasizing that point because nobody wants to, yeah, uh, lower the standards. But this is a test that's proven to be an obstacle with a lot of bias and that there's many other ways to ensure quality in our teachers. And so, yeah, I'm so glad you emphasized that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I think it's important, too, that we understand that there is a little history here with praxis, uh, that twice it has, uh, went through the process, the state board, and then, what is it, the attorney general, and then the governor? Is that, is that correct? I want to make sure that I'm saying that correctly.
Yeah, and it, it went through that, that process, and then we didn't, we didn't end up changing it. And that was really just kind of a, uh, changing the cut scores within that, right? So, that was an approach that was not, not as broad as what I think now we've evolved to say, hey, look, there ought to be at least considerations of these other, other approaches.
But there has been some movement over the years with this. And then, if I may, just kind of change the topic for just a quick moment, if that's okay.
Before we do that, I'll come back to you, Robyn. I want to recognize Jaclyn. She's on the same topic.
Sure.
So, I just wanted to be clear. I, too, believe we have a praxis problem, and I don't think that it's lowering the standard of teaching. But what I want to be clear on is that we're all talking as a unit. Because right now, if we don't officially have a roadmap, if we don't have a policy, if we don't have a statement, it doesn't appear that it's coming from the board or from the department. It's very fragmented. And so, I want to make sure if we're going to move forward with something, that we have a plan in place to say, this is what we are collectively deciding to do. The other component, you referred to LR 157, and I just looked at it. It talks about recruiting teachers of color and the disproportionate amount of students of color versus the amount of teachers. And that's kind of how we got to the praxis conversation. And the thing that worries me or concerns me is we're talking about kind of the symptom, but not what is the core problem and why aren't teachers of color able to pass this test in the state of Nebraska? And so, I would like for, to see us as a department kind of consider what we're doing to make sure we close some of those equity gaps between the teachers of color who are applying. Those are our students who are eventually graduating and wanting to become teachers. And so, I think we, I know that NSCA has done a lot. I, I've seen their presentation on what they're doing, kind of looking at moving the praxis up so that students are taking it sooner in college. They're also looking at doing cohorts so that teachers are able to do trainings and kind of learning more about how to take the test. So, I know that the teachers union is actively working on this. But I think a question we should ask is, how can the Department of Education equally have programs that are working on this?
Um, I had one of my superintendents, um, address that issue with me, and they reminded me to be very careful in how we message the diversity, um, not being able to pass the praxis. It's not only this, um, the students of color, there are many, uh, that aren't, that don't pass. So, one year, and yeah, we, yes, we want diversity in the teacher workforce, for sure. But it's not just the people of color that aren't passing. In one year, um, I can't remember the number of students that took the praxis one, 20%. We list out, we missed out on an opportunity because 20% of people of color didn't pass. But look at the percentage of non-people of color that also did not pass. So, it's an issue for all students who want to be teachers. And I think we have to be, and I wasn't aware of this. I think, I appreciated what the superintendent said to me. We have to be careful in how we message that because it isn't just people of color that don't, don't pass that. And I hadn't thought about that before in the messaging.
Robyn, I'm finally back to you.
Thank you again. Uh, once again, mine is moving away from praxis. So, if there are those who want to talk about praxis, certainly, uh, they could.
Is there anything else that the board would like to discuss about praxis? Okay.
Okay. The, the other part that Teaching, Learning, and Serving Committee talked about, or some areas of, of ultimate importance, and that is math and, well, it isn't mentioned, but English Language Arts. And, uh, I'm excited about the, uh, updates in those required standards. And, uh, I guess, I guess I wanted to give a shout out to Cory and his crew, Cory Epler and his crew, uh, for their work on that. And then, this is a rhetorical question, but I want to make sure someone says it. Is there an opportunity for people throughout the state to, to talk about and give their input on English Language Arts? I, I think maybe that is passed, but, uh, was there with English, English Language Arts? And is there an opportunity for people to respond to those, uh, updates? Because I think that's really, really, really an important thing that everyone needs to be aware of. So, if, if you want to answer that for me, Lisa, that would be great.
My answer is yes, but the details I'll leave to the commissioner.
I heard rhetorical questions, so I usually don't provide an answer for that, but I guess I do. So, yeah, well, I mean, like always, and actually, I think we have a little later discussion on just standards process, and so maybe I'll just kind of leave it to that. But our intent always is to ensure that there's opportunities for input on, on, on that process.
Patty?
Yes, and I would just add, Robyn, to your comments about additional things in the committee, that we did have a discussion about the work that's being done relative to the, um, standards development process, how that process can be improved. The process with many content areas has worked, but there's always opportunity for improvement. And Cory and his team is working on making suggested changes for the, the process. So, that is, that is happening.
Deborah?
I know we're going to talk about process in a few minutes, uh, but it fits here, too. I guess I, I want to make sure that when we talk about process, that we understand that I believe we're talking about two different processes. That updating standards, in my opinion, is not the same as presenting standards for the first time. Because when an update of standards is done, you know, that we've done in recent years, we had a sort of process that wasn't written down, but it was followed, although definitely with change, uh, each time, depending on who led those processes, uh, from the staff. But presenting standards for the first time is when I believe the, uh, scientific rigor is, is really needing attention. And so, I, I'm hoping that when we talk about processes, we're talking about two different processes. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item 6.5, Student Success Access and Support Domain, and I will report on that. The Committee on the AQuest Student Success and Access and Support Domain met on October 5th, 2021, and had one action item to approve the renewal of Rule 11, waiver requests for moral public schools. The committee recommended the approval of this item. The committee had one discussion item on Leading for Equity and Excellence LEAP State Policy Network. NSCTA Conference this year provided a workshop on how to develop diversity, equity, and inclusion statements. A template formula was shared at the conference to be utilized to create your own statement. The committee had two updated items. Number one, Melody Hobson provided a brief overview of the legal scope of the NDE and the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services. Two, Zaina Brita provided a brief report on how NDE is addressing school mental health. A three-day institute, three-day institutes were conducted on September 28th through September 30th. 14 ESUs and five LEAs attended and participated in these institutes. The goal of these institutes is to help each of the ESUs to become a trainer of the comprehensive school-based mental health program modules, allowing them to host their own institute with schools within their service area who wish to develop a comprehensive, comprehensive school-based mental health program. I, uh, we did not receive the formula, but if anyone would like the formula for the, um, for the, um, statement, the diversity, um, equity statement formula, I'd be glad to send it to you. And the person who did that workshop suggested that that wasn't a process that you just, that just state boards went through, or, um, schools went through, or it was a process that an individual could go through to, um, assess their, their place as far as diversity and, um, um, yeah, as far as diversity. Okay, so, um, the other thing, let's see, there's one other thing that I was going to amend here that I thought we probably should include. Um, oh, I wanted to say also that moral is a perfect example, Deborah, of what we keep coming back to, and you brought it up, and here it is again. And it is not their problem. It, right now, is our problem, and we need to really analyze it and take a look at it. And so, you cannot say no to a school who has done everything in good faith to, um, to, uh, find a teacher to do that. And Melody Hobson, uh, reported on that. And they had more students that they could handle in one class, so they had to make two class, two classes, and they had to have another teacher. So, um, that was really important to have that. This concludes the AQuest Student Success and Access Support Committee report. Patty Kojon's chair.
Just a quick comment. I'm glad, Deborah, and then you reiterated what you said about, um, you know, waivers. And I'm hoping that the revision of Rule 10, the AAA, will have portions, parts of that, that allow different paths to allow teachers to work and yet get their degree.
Um, we have one action item that came out of that committee. So, I move to approve the Rule 11 teacher waiver request for moral public schools. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lisa, second. Um, will you take?
That's for discussion.
Oh, discussion? Yes, Robyn.
Just to make sure, how do you spell moral? Is it M-O-R-A-L or M-O-R-R-I-L-L?
The second.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion. Okay, all right. We need to take a vote.
Nichols? Neary?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Kojon's?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, one vacant.
The motion passed. Agenda item 6.5B. Whoops.
Yeah, 6.6.
Yeah, we already did that, yeah. Agenda item 6.6, Budget and Finance. Maureen was to report. Okay, Patty, all right. Please provide a report from the Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you. The Budget and Finance Committee meeting met on October 6th. We began our discussion by talking about some of the consent agenda items. Specifically, we were interested in discussing the amount of funds in the agenda items specifically related to the need to administer all of the additional federal funds that are flowing through NDE. The staff provided an explanation about how they determined the number of staff needed in order to do that work and what costs were associated with the staff. The additional employees will be fixed-term employees that will cover the three years of the ESER grant duration. NDE staff had compared and considered outsourcing this work versus having the work done internally. And through that comparison, it became evident that there really was only one option. And that option is for NDE to have staff to complete the work related to the ESER funds. Specifically, some of the rationale is that the technologies that schools use would not be consistent with an outsourced agency's technology. So, you would have all kinds of glitches for the, the reporting to occur. And also, that when you outsource work, you lose some of the control and the ability to monitor the flow of funds out and reimbursements and things like that, a lot of, uh, content-wise, what we were talking about earlier. So, we did spend time talking about that staffing. The committee had also requested an explanation of how schools receiving project-aware grants are selected. And that process includes that the superintendent of schools, um, supply, submit, and application. Then a needs assessment is used to determine which sites would be priority. then a needs assessment is used to determine which sites would be priority. All three of the schools receiving the project aware grant are TSI schools. In addition to discussing consent agenda items, we looked at the monthly travel expense report, the in-state travel authorization reports. We had no discussion related to those. And finally, the commissioner briefed the committee that the full board would be discussing the deficit budget request during our meeting today. That concludes the Budget and Finance Committee Report with Maureen Nichols acting as chair.
Is there any discussion? Jaclyn.
Just one quick question. If the department submits a request for additional, additional funding to the legislature and it's denied, how does the department plan to finance the move and the other costs without an increase in the budget? What's the alternative?
It's a great question. So part of this, in the midst of all these moving parts with the agency, I mean, we would have to look at, you know, how you could use other funds to do this. We're looking in part, there are federal funds that apply for this that we have resources for, but we also need the authority from, from the legislature to be able to do some of that work in, in that process. So, yes, we, we would have that conversation with them. We've been having conversations. So this is generally kind of the routine business of how they would handle an office move. It wasn't, you know, just us, it's a whole bunch of other agencies that are involved in it, and so that's, that's how that would work. If we got to that point where it's like, uh, they aren't going to be able to do those things, yeah, it's, it's a bit of a conundrum, I guess, in that sense. But I, I do think, I'm not as worried about that as I am just worried that, ensuring that all those process pieces are in place to be able to ask for the funds, so. We don't want to miss our, our chance to ask, and that's, that's why this is important, so.
Lisa?
I, I don't know if, Commissioner, how much is the rent approximately for the building per month? Is it like?
I'll have to get, I'll misstate, so.
I mean, it's over a hundred thou-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, like, well over a hundred thousand. And if they don't approve your, your budget-
So rent, yeah.
-that you're requesting, have them lower the rent.
We do rent from the other agency, by the way, so that's actually part of that process, too, so.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. The Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee did not meet, therefore there is no report from the Strategic Planning and Performance and Improvement Committee meeting. Pursuant to Board Policy B9, I move to limit public comment at the November 5th, 2021 meeting to a maximum of one hour. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded. It has been moved by Patty Kojon's and seconded by Deborah Neary. Okay? Is there any discuss-
It was seconded by Patty.
It was me. Oh, it was? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Patty. It was seconded by Patty Goobles. Is there any discussion on the motion? Lisa?
I have a concern with that. In the past few months, we've had so many people come to our meetings, and I'm just guessing that maybe you could get through 25 people in an hour, maybe depending upon two minutes or five minutes. And so I would recommend that we do at least two hours rather than the one. If people are going to take the time to get off of work, maybe have daycare, maybe drive three to five hours for a particular topic, I would like to see it be at least two hours. We've sat through four, but that's just my thought.
Jaclyn.
I would like some context of where this motion came from, because I had not been told that this was going to be a request prior to today, and maybe there was an email that I missed. But we started out moving to limit public comment on the day of the meeting, once we knew how many people were going to show up. And then we moved to doing it ahead of time, like, a day before, and now we're at a month before, and I have no reason to under, I, I don't even understand why we're doing this or what the, could somebody please just give me an history of why we're making this motion, what the rationale is? Board meetings were moved this week to accommodate hearings that we had to have. Our other requests for our normal meeting times for committee meetings were moved to times during the week that I couldn't even attend because I had work. And so we do have the ability to move meetings and hearings when it's convenient for us. So I, I just need to know why, why, where this came from.
The only part that I, first of all, just trying to identify what we are going to accomplish at the next meeting, it's up to you, right? So this motion comes as, there are other agencies or other entities that restrict to one hour, so we can actually be able to communicate that to the, whatever you decide to do for the next meeting, so we can prepare appropriately for that. I think what we did in the last couple times, we actually tried to, as best possible, understand what the, what the environment was going to be like and make sure that we had an appropriate environment for the, for the meeting. So we're really looking for a way to make sure that you identified what you want to accomplish in that, in that, in that process, rather than do it the day of a meeting, so.
Jaclyn.
Do we know what the agenda's going to be for the November 3rd, 5th meeting, for me to tell you what I'd like to accomplish if I don't even know what the agenda is?
I, yeah, I'm going to treat that as a rhetorical, too. I don't know, obviously, that's the point. But, but what I'm getting at on, on this point is, however you decide to do it, so we can make a planning decision about how we organize, so.
Well, I don't want to get into back and forth with you, Commissioner, but you and Maureen, the president of the board, set the agenda with, and so my question is, as of today, on October 8th, have you and the president together set the agenda for the November 5th meeting?
No.
Okay. I can't support this. So I, I don't think it's fair to us to say what needs to be accomplished if we don't even know what is going to be on the agenda. The last time that our meeting format was changed, it was to move all of our business to Thursday, to allow for public comment on Friday, so that we could accomplish everything we needed to do on Thursday to make it accessible to the public. This week, when we had hearings, we again moved those committee meetings to earlier in the week to accomplish what we need to do. Every single meeting, we have moved our meetings for the past few months to accommodate what needed to happen and still accommodate the public comment. And so for us to do something differently this time, I think is preemptive, it's presumptuous, and I don't, I don't think it's genuine, so I, I don't support this.
Lisa?
Whatever is decided, when I think of the, the comment period, the public needs to know well in advance so that they can make preparations. One hour, I don't believe, is enough time, considering the constituency that has come the past few months to share their concerns. So I, I can't vote for one hour.
Robin?
Was there any discussion about length of presentations, or do you know the commissioner see his waving, or shaking his head no? Okay, thank you.
Deborah?
Yeah, I, over the last six months, I've mentioned to a number of you quite a few times about making our meetings more accessible around the state. I, we were finally able to accommodate a meeting in Omaha, and I appreciate that. But it wasn't just Omaha I was worried about. I mean, I really hope that we are more accessible all over the state with our meetings, because I think it is a concern that someone would have to drive four hours in order to be heard at a public board meeting. And so, because that has been my stance for the last, you know, many, many months, it's certainly not something that I could support a limit of if we didn't have a reason or know the agenda, so.
Any further discussion? Would you please call the rule?
Morrison?
No.
Fricki?
No.
Nichols? Goobles?
No.
Kojon's?
No.
Neary?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Six no, one absent, one vacant.
So I'm thinking that perhaps we need to discuss what it's going to be or not. Nope? Okay. Thank you. 7.2, Discuss the Development Process Policy for Standards in the Future. Jaclyn Morrison.
So I requested that this be put on the agenda, and I asked for it to be put on the agenda so that I could speak to the full board and not just that come through the policy committee and other people not here. There are people who say that the process we had was working. I can't in good conscience say that that process worked. We got calls for our resignation, we have the governor upset with us, the legislature upset with us, superintendents upset with us, and eventually, because the process was so tumultuous, we stopped the process. So to say the process that we had, it's working, or it worked, or it works, I think is disingenuous. And so one of the things I would like to see is for us to dedicate some time and energy toward developing a process that's written, that's transparent, and that works. And so whether that should come through a referral to the policy committee or through the creation of a new committee, I think we need to consider that as a board, how we're going to handle a new process, or, actually, I think we need a new process, a transparent process, and a development of a process. Throughout the process of the health standards, I heard the commissioner state, and I will misquote him, but in general, we, we do need to work on improving this, we need to work on, we need to work on this. And I asked kind of for an overview of what the process is, and I got an email from some time ago that kind of outlined what had happened with the health standards, but I don't think it was a formal, well, I know it's not a formal document. And I, I'm concerned that wait, us as a board, waiting for the department to initiate this is the wrong approach, because I think that the, a lot of the health standards was department-initiated, and we are the ones who kind of caught the brunt of all of the frustrations. And so I would hope that we, as board members, could decide that we were going to make this a priority and either say, policy committee, we want a policy by a certain date, or we need this to be worked on, or that you guys would join me. My preference would be for us to create a special committee devoted to this issue so that it gets the attention that it needs. Either way, I don't think that the process worked, and I think that we need to fix it. And so I'm hoping that we can kind of brainstorm amongst ourselves how that process can be fixed.
I, I guess I just feel compelled to perhaps explain my comment about the process working. I am not necessarily talking about the health education standards process and/or anything else associated with it, because we know there were lots of different kinds of issues, from COVID limiting people being able to be in person. That was a very unique situation. My reference is to, I don't think we want to just throw out everything about the process that has been in place, because clearly, up to the point of the health ed standards, that process had worked. That, that's my clarification, Jaclyn. I was not necessarily referring to the process as it played out with the health ed standards.
Robin?
I appreciate the comments from both of you people, both of my colleagues. Thank you very much. I think they're very relevant. If I was to suggest, I would like to see an ad hoc committee developed, not only of, of board members, but also members of, of NDE. And if you thought that, that it should be a broader group of people, I would go along with that as well. But those two areas come to my mind, so I, I would support that, that ad hoc discussion.
Deborah?
Yeah, and I, I wanted to just repeat what I said because I'm hoping that I'm heard. The process that we had was one for updating standards. And even in that process, I called people who were involved in working on past standards that were updated, and to ask them things like, how's the advisory committee utilized? And I learned through that, that each time we did standards, how the staff used the advisory committee was very different. And I had the concern because I knew that for the sex ed standards or health education standards, the advisory committee wasn't being used very much. And, but I come back to the fact that the process we have was for updating standards. And we just went through, our health education standards were being presented for the first time, and for many months, I had been asking for us to look at the process. We never made a vote of the board to decide we were even going to release them. I know the fact that they were even going to be worked on was a decision that was made before many of us were even on the board, because it's part of a timeline for, that the staff puts in place. And so as we talk about process and say what works, I just want to make sure that we end, I know we all know this last process didn't work, but I believe it's in part because it was new standards and did require more thought about the process when we're working on something new. So, thank you.
Lisa?
I too appreciate the comments and the question. What I would like to see is what we did for revision of Rule 10 ideas. We had a retreat, and it was led by Reg Lipte, and we had two tables of four. And what I see it looking like, I think we need to hear what the concerns of every single board member would be. board member would be in this process. And if you just send it to one committee first, that's not going to happen right away. So just troubleshooting in a retreat to talk about what went wrong, what you would like to see, and then with that list of ideas from every board member, then go to a committee, whether it's the Policy Committee or the Ad Hoc Committee. But again, I emphasize with this process having some flaws that we've recognized, I think we need to hear what each board member perceives as problems before we send it to a committee, and the committee has a list of things to look at and figure out. That's just my...
Thank you, Lisa.
The fir... I have two things, I guess. The first one is, you know, I'm new on the board, but my understanding is that we have developed standards in the fairly recent past for some of the other content areas that are not required by state statute. Is that a correct assumption? So we have had new standards development within the last, I don't know how many years, but just so that I'm sure I understand that. The second thing is, as I'm listening to this conversation, we're talking somewhat about policy and somewhat about what I would call process implementation. I think those two are very separate things. What I'm hearing, I think, is that we are more focused on how does this work? What are the steps that are involved? To me, that seems to be much more in the realm of an ad hoc committee. That would be my recommendation as opposed to a policy.
Any more discussion?
I do like the idea of ad hoc committee. I do think it's policy and procedural. I see policy being on the side of kind of who makes the decisions, whether it's something that's initiated by the department or is it something that would be board-initiated kind of within that decision-making process? Or what role does the board want versus what role does the department have in the process? So I think we're... A lot of us are on the same page. I don't know procedurally if we can make a motion at this time. I guess Ryan would have to state whether or not... Because the issue is on the agenda, but I don't know...
You can't take an item up for action that's not on the agenda yet.
Okay. So what I will do is make a request to put that on the agenda for next month. But thanks for the discussion.
Yeah, one thing I'd just add too, that I believe underneath our policies, the President can create an ad hoc committee, so that would be another thing that you'd be requesting that the President would do that. And that wouldn't take any action item, I don't believe. You could still have an agenda item as you saw fit, so.
I guess might we could take it to the President and see if she would do it. If she does not on her own motion, then I would make the motion at the next meeting, and then we could take a vote on it.
Okay, well, we'll report this to the Madam President, so I'm sure she'll want to accommodate. Comments or discussion on this? Okay, we'll move to... Discuss process for adding items to the agenda. Debra Neary.
Actually, I don't have anything for that. I had my questions answered ahead of time, so I... Anyway, thank you, though.
Thank you, Debra. Agenda item 7.4. I keep holding it. Okay. 7.4. Discuss contracts related to brain injury capacity building project. Debra Neary.
Actually, for that, I'd rather postpone that discussion to next month, so I don't have anything this month, so, thank you.
Thank you, Debra. 7.5. Should I say this first, though?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. 7.5. The CAC Committee. I can't read the writing.
This is the item that was moved off of consent, so it's actually item 5.2.A., which we'll take up at this point, so.
Okay. And it's an action item? Okay. I move to appoint the recommended individuals to fill the vacancies on the CAC Special Education Advisory Council. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patty.
That was Debra.
Debra.
Oh, was it you two? Okay.
It was both of you. We can cut it now.
Can we have... Yeah. Oh, seconders.
Okay. Discussion on this item? Debra.
So I requested that it be pulled from the agenda just because I wanted to give some background on why these things are so important to me. For the last couple of years that I've been on the board, I guess I've just worked in nonprofit world for so long and have had a couple of jobs where my job was to travel around the state. I did this in the museum sector and in the mentoring sector, both. My job was to make sure that organizations around the state were utilizing all the new research-based best practices. And it required a lot of nudging because what I learned is that a lot of organizations, no matter how big or how small, or how great the staff is, or how great the leadership is, it's very easy for organizations to get stuck in default mode, where it's very easy to just keep doing the processes you've always done with the same people that you've always done those processes. And I worked hard to get on the State Board of Education in order to work on the achievement gaps in the state because I do believe that we need to address the gaps that exist and the reason that they exist, and we really need to change the way we hold our processes, the way we think about our processes, and change the people that are doing the work by adding more inclusivity of backgrounds, different lines of thought, make sure that we're representative of all the populations that make up our state, that we're representative of all the regions of our state, and that we have many different voices as part of our processes. So the staff will tell you that for the last two years, anytime a committee has come to our board or to one of our subcommittees to be approved, I have always spent time Googling every single person that we're approving for any committee to make sure that we have different representation than what the default mode was, and that we had a lot of different inclusivity of backgrounds, of thought, and of specialty areas. And that was something that was important to me for everything that we've done. A year ago, I asked in our Student Success Committee, I asked that we put together... I didn't want a policy because at the time, we were in the middle of a pandemic. I knew that a policy was going to take a lot of thought. I was asking for a process or a rubric or something that would be used as an internal document to help change the culture and help change the thinking about how we looked at our committees and how we could start trying to get new people, new voices, to our processes. And I just want to say that I am pleased with the appointments, recommendations that we're approving today. I Googled everybody that we're approving and love the background and expertise, and just want to say kudos to the staff and the team that brought forward these names. And also thank Carlos Servan and Lupe Stevens, and I apologize if I've mispronounced your name, but I just want to thank you for your service to the committee that we're approving. Thank you.
Thank you, Debra. Any further discussion? Robin.
Whether we have agreed or disagreed on this, I do want to say that my colleague, Debra, has been consistent with this from the time which... When we came on this board together. And so I just want to emphasize that as this is something that hasn't just all of a sudden showed up on Debra's radar, and I appreciate her passion.
Any more discussion? Call the rule.
Goobles?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Ko-Jones?
Yes.
Nichols? Fricki?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Six, yes, one absent, one vacant.
Thank you, Andrea. Let's see. A motion passed. Okay. Agenda item number eight. Information items and reports. 8.1 through 8.4. The next items are information items and written reports to the board and for our information only. Agenda item number nine, for the good of the order. This section of the agenda is intended for board members to offer informal observations of the work of the State Board. Board members may make brief announcements about attendance at future events for the purpose of informing other board members. No business or motions or suggested actions of the board may be offered at this point in the agenda, nor should board members engage in substantive discussion about other agenda items or introduce new agenda items. Debra.
I don't usually talk this much at a meeting, so sorry, but I just want to repeat what Board Member Stevens said earlier. I really appreciate all of my peers on the board. I appreciate the diversity of thought, backgrounds. We all... I know that my peers care passionately about doing what's best for the youth and families of Nebraska, and they bring completely different backgrounds to our discussions, and I just appreciate everybody's work, and I don't say that enough. And so just want to make sure that you all know that. Thank you.
Anymore? Okay. Agenda item number 10. Thank you for those who attended in person and who tuned in to the broadcast. As needed, a work session will be held on Thursday, November 4th at a time and location to be determined. A business meeting will be held on Friday, November 5th at 9:00 a.m. at a location to be determined. The October 8th, 2021 State Board meeting is adjourned.